Okay, we'll move on. We are now going to go to action items. And tonight, it was our third reading of the 2019-2020 general fund budget that, if you were here earlier, Mr. Butler presented for the last time. Mr. Butler, so, board members, you have heard the presentation of the third reading of the budget during the public hearing. Let's get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments, and then we'll vote. So, do I have a motion regarding the 2019-2020 general fund budget?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the third reading of the general fund budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 as recommended by the administration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, now, let's open it up for questions or comments. Board, are there any questions or comments before we vote?
I have some questions. Carter just mentioned that we have some employees making over $100,000 a year while other teachers make $40,000. Are there any board members that know the specific salaries that we're paying our top-paid employees? Do y'all have those figures?
Yeah, we've had them before. All you have to do is request them.
I'm asking, do you have them tonight before you take a vote?
They're also available on the web. Any state employee that makes over $50,000 that is public access.
Right, I have plenty of them. I'm saying, tonight, before y'all take a vote, would you know to the penny how much you're paying your top-paid employees?
Ms. Harris, may I ask what your line of questioning concerns? What are you driving at? What is your point?
I'm saying, since you're voting on a budget, do you have all of the details in that budget?
I don't have all of the details, any of them, do you?
No, I don't have the details. That's, that's the problem. That's why I'm asking the question.
It's online. It's online.
That information's not online. It may be online for last fiscal year, but not what we're voting on right now.
Okay.
It's okay. I was just wondering.
Anything else, Ms. Anderson, I mean, Ms. Harris?
Yes. I would just like to say that, um, six weeks ago, I requested a detailed budget for each department in central services, and also salary info for every department in central services, and I have yet to receive that information. And based on that...
Wait, I am a little confused on that. I thought she just wanted a sample. I don't think you were... Did you request for each? If I remember, I saw it, and you said, can you give me an example?
My email said, can I get the detailed budget for each department in central services, like the one you provided for the communications department? Could you also provide the proposed salary budget for each department in central services, and a copy of one elementary school's proposed budget?
Okay.
So, that email was never responded to.
I don't think I got it. Did you send it to me?
No, I sent it to Dr. Little and Mr. Butler.
It would be helpful if you would copy me on it, so I can follow up on those. Okay, anything else?
Basically, for me, the budget lacks transparency. As I noted, when we were reviewing the budget, there's $300,000 in there that we can't account Also, the memorandum of understanding, the budget could change based on that information, but we don't have a meeting until tomorrow, so, those are just some points I wanted to make before taking a vote.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Harris? Okay, anything else, board members? Okay.
If I may, going back and looking, the reduction that you mentioned in utilities/maintenance, in order to balance a budget, we actually went back to each location and reduced the amount of maintenance that we had budgeted in those areas, so that accounted for that reduction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor regarding the 2019-2020 general fund budget. All in favor of the general fund budget as proposed by the senior staff and by our finance department, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jada.
I'm sorry?
Jada's opposed.
Okay. So, we have six in favor and one opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, we now have a third reading of the 2020-2021 academic school calendar, and this is for Dr. Tally. Do I... Let's get a motion on the floor, and we'll discuss this as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2020-2021 academic school calendar?
Madam Chair, the 2020-2021 academic school calendar is attached for the third reading. I move that the board approve the 2020-2021 academic school calendar as proposed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Okay, let's open the floor up for comments or discussion. Are there any comments or discussion, board?
I would just like to make a comment. This is the first time that we're doing four weather makeup days, and it's kind of a trial run with this idea, four weather makeup days. We've been asked many times over the last three or four years since we've had a fall weather event, while we didn't have a weather makeup day in the fall. We already have a calendar that, where the fall is squished, and the spring has more time, but Dr. Tally and her calendar committee really worked hard to find a way to at least try this idea of a fall weather makeup day, and so, I'm looking forward to kind of see, you know, if it benefits us. You know, an AP student, an extra day at the, you know, beginning of May doesn't help them as much as a day earlier on, so, I'm eager to see how this calendar works for our students and our staff.
And thank you, Dr. Tally, for taking that back to the calendar committee and, you know, seeking feedback.
Sure, it's my pleasure.
Because it's, it is nice to try something new and see if it's... Because the weather does something new every day.
Certainly does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the 2020-2021 academic school calendar is presented by Dr. Tally and the calendar committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and it is unanimous. This time, we'll have the second reading for policy BE board meetings, and let's get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for discussion from Ms. Hill. Do I hear a motion to approve policy BE board meetings as presented? Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Ms. Hill, you want to walk us through this policy?
So, you received the first reading last month, and the primary change at the beginning with first reading was that we were going from 7:30 start times on board meetings to the 7:00 p.m. board meeting timeframe. Since then, before this reading, we've had the suggestion that in the annual meeting paragraph that you see in front of you, that we remove the language "annual" because the board does not have organizational meetings every year, because we don't have elections every year. So, we have elections every two years unless there's a special circumstance. So, we're removing... The suggestion is to remove the word "annual" and to remove "November" because the November thing could not exist in a special election scenario, or it might not exist if the certification takes longer. So, and then we added "and certification" because not only does a board member have to be elected, but the South Carolina Election Commission has to certify that election too, which normally takes seven to 10 days afterwards. So, those are the further recommendations for changes only to that one paragraph under the defined annual meeting.
Board members, are there any questions or comments regarding any of those changes?
Ms. Hill, I'm still learning my, my mapping, if you will, when it, when it comes to, to district policies, and we have our board policies, and the table of contents has policy BE as school board records. Is this...
Okay, so, this is, here's what's happening, and that's a very good question. So, we are under, we have a mixed scenario in our board policies right now. Some of them are named and called policy names that are not recognized nationally, but the nation, in the nation, school boards are trying to all get to the same place. So that, let's say you were raising your child in South Carolina, and you moved to California, then policy BE board meetings would be the same, no matter what state you were in, or no matter what district. And so, that's what we're currently working on, and that's why we keep plugging through each section. So, we keep bringing... So, next time, we'll go further down the B policies and bring you some more until they're all recodified, and once that happens, all those old conflicts in table contents will go away. Like, that happened in the A section already, and we're getting closer now to ending the B section.
Okay, so, we should basically disregard the codification of it?
Yes, I would ignore the table of contents right now.
Okay. All right, that, that makes sense.
And they're taking them off as, as we go through. For instance, sometimes, when we approved BE the first time a year ago, it took seven policies away, because we had policies that only had one paragraph or one line in them. And so, as we go in line with the South Carolina School Board Association and the National School Board Association's recodification process, it's much more streamlined, a better system for y'all, and much more effective.
And so, the, the most up-to-date information would be found, website?
Um, they're putting it on the website, and so, the best...
Our website, or...
Actually, our website is linking directly to the school boards associations, and they actually host all our policies, as well as most districts in South Carolina.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Sure.
Ms. Hill, going back to the additional changes to the annual meeting paragraph...
Right.
...that aren't in the draft that we have in our packet, could you just read to me what the new first sentence would be on that paragraph?
Sure. So, the annual meeting paragraph would now read, "The board holds its organizational meeting at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers and swears in those officers at the meeting."
Thank you. Just want to make sure I had...
So, is that a replacement of the, the, the old codification?
We had already recodified this policy, so it has the correct name and the correct lettering, but there's still language that has shifted, primarily the fact that the board wanted to change a start time from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. And then, when we were looking at closer, we realized we still had language that indicated that we would hold... Every board doesn't hold elections on the same timeframe. So, our board holds elections every two years, because you have a four-year term, and half roll, basically half roll off every two years. And so, ours is a two-year cycle, and so, that annual reference didn't apply to this district.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
I have a question as well. There are other policies, just say there's an annual meeting policy that still has the same language in it. When will we revise those?
So, some of those go away as we work through these, and so, you'll see them just drop off as we make changes. Do you know what number that was exactly?
No, I just remember looking it up.
Okay. You'll, we're getting really close to the end of Bs, the whole B recodification, so it will kind of all make sense pretty soon when we finish that, and at that time, the school board association will place the entire table contents for that section, and only the good ones will be there.
Okay, thank you.
I think we need to make one more change. Maybe I'm crazy, but I don't remember that we've ever sworn our officers in. We just elect them. So, I'm thinking we need to do the "board elects officers," put a period, and then just delete the rest of that sentence. What do y'all think?
Agreed. We swear new board members in.
But we don't swear in officers.
Yes, correct.
Is everybody okay with that?
So, let me say it back to you. So, what I hear you want to change is the "board elects officers and swears in those officers at the meeting." You want to change it to the "board elects officers..."
Period.
Period.
And, and I guess as a part of that, is there, is there a separate policy for continuation of leadership? So, if the, you know, for example, say November comes, the election committee has not certified results, three board members rotate off who were chair, vice chair, secretary...
Which is what happened, basically, this year.
Yeah, so, is, is there a separate policy for that, or is that embedded within this code BE?
So, there is not a separate policy that addresses exactly what you're asking. It does function under this policy. What happens in many cases is it's not the entire... For instance, the last election's an example, the board chair decided not to run again and rolled off, in which case, until the, everybody was certified, and we could come in and start a meeting and elect new officers, the vice chair fills in, just as the vice chair would fill in any time that the board chair was out sick or unable to fulfill their duties.
But I'm saying, what if all three?
If that happened, that would be a conundrum, and we would probably have someone step up, you know, there would have to be some temporary solution for that timeframe. We would hope that all three wouldn't, that should the chair and the vice chair not be able to do it, the next, the secretary would be able to fulfill the obligation until then.
Okay.
For instance, Ms. Green filled in last month for the position of vice secretary. You helped, she's vice chair, but she helped because Dr. Powers couldn't be there as secretary. So...
Okay.
So, I'm hopeful all three would not leave at one time.
I was, I thought I had read a policy, and I don't remember if it was Sycamore School Board, where the superintendent serves as an ex officio.
Mm-hmm. He, so, when we do election...
In a case like that, would, would preside over the meeting to then, I guess, do a temporary election.
If we had a scenario like that, that could happen, because when we do elect officers that day, the superintendent does open the meeting, and the superintendent serves as the board chair until the first office is elected, until a new board chair is elected.
Gotcha.
Well, and Dr. Guyton, and this is, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into this, because I think this policy update is appropriate to do now, but I've been tossing around the idea, because of that, of what happened this year, and the potential for a situation like that, and also, the last two elections we've had, three new board members have come in into an election, the next, their first meeting. And that's a little bit difficult for brand-new board members to vote on officers for which they're not familiar. Is possibly, in the future, changing our policies so that our officer elections take place on an odd year, so that it's in between voting elections, so that we will have served together for a year before we, and elect officers. But then, you can run into the dilemma that your officer, your chair loses reelection. But that, you would cover that in the policy, but I think there might be... I mean, it's just a little awkward to vote for an officer when you're brand-new on the board.
Sure, sure.
And I think you probably experienced that as well.
Yep.
But that, that's something that we can kind of examine and research for a future possible change.
But that's not within the purview of this, for what you're seeking approval for tonight.
Not, not tonight. Now, know this, that these are, policies are constantly reflected of the state law. And so, for instance, Mr. Caldwell's bringing some policies that have to be passed before August 1st according to state law, although we just got the models and we just got the information. So, after the August school board session meeting, we'll receive a legislative update that tells us all the other laws that were passed during this legislative session, and how they affect our current policies. So, we could have passed this policy today and find that in August, we have to bring something back again, so it's a constant...
Ms. Hill, we're, we're out of, we're out of wrenches. We, we, we can't take any more wrenches being thrown at me. Duly noted, though. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Now, I need to figure out if we need to make an amendment. Do we need to amend it, or what you, I think we do need to make?
I think it would be a good suggestion that if you would have a motion to make the changes that you recommended.
So, you originally were given this update with just the time change down in the bottom of regular board meeting, and then tonight, we've had some input from board members reflecting some changes, so, Ms. Hill, will you read those changes once more?
I will. So, the original change that we reflected from, in first reading, was that the board meeting scheduled time would go from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. In this meeting, in between the first and second reading, and with additional input at this meeting, the recommendation is that the annual meeting paragraph reads like this. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly..."
First of all, I think we need to change it from "annual meeting."
I did take "annual" out.
Out of the heading?
Oh, out of the heading.
Yeah.
No, I didn't.
I know, I just realized that.
I would rename that "organizational meeting," maybe?
Yeah.
That works. Thank you. Y'all are testing my editing skills. Organizational meeting. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers." You might want to leave it...
That's a little weird.
I, I would suggest that you leave it, "The board elects officers at that meeting."
Or at the organizational meeting.
Yeah, at the organizational meeting. I like that. Okay. So, now, let's reread it one more time, since we made some more changes.
All right, hang on one second. Okay. Organizational meeting. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers at the organizational meeting."
Okay. So, we have now amended policy BE, so we need to have a motion on the floor to accept the amendments. Do I have a motion to amend policy BE to reflect the changes suggested in the organizational meeting paragraph?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the amendments to policy BE as just reflected.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments regarding the amendment? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amended changes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment carries. We now have a motion and a second on the floor for the original BE without the amendment, so let's, we need to close that out and vote no, and then we need to reopen it with the amendment. So, all in favor of policy BE as originally presented with just the time change, and I believe, let's see, that was presented by Ms. Green and Dr. Powers. All those in favor, please say...
I'm sorry, can we just withdraw the motion?
Yeah, let's do that. That would be good.
That would be easier and less confusing.
Yes, let's withdraw the motion. So, now, do I have a new motion? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy BE board meetings as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Powers. So, board, you are now voting on policy BE with an amendment. All those in favor of policy BE as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Okay, thank you for working through that. Okay, now, 14.4 is student travel requests. Do I hear a motion to approve... How many travel requests?
Six.
Six travel requests. As, do I have a motion to approve the six travel requests?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the six student travel requests.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Tally, anything you want to say about those six trips?
Just that they're nice trips. Two of them are international trips, and we're delighted that our students are citizens of the world and get to have those experiences. So, I appreciate your approval of those.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tally. All those in favor of the six student travel requests, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. We are now going to 14.5, which is a procurement delegation for ratification of procurements, and this is presented by Mr. Butler. Board members, do I hear a motion to authorize procurement delegation for ratification of procurements as requested?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's request to delegate the unauthorized procurement ratification delegation to the chief operations officer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, now, let's, Mr. Butler, you want to comment on that, and then we'll vote?
Yeah, that normally falls under the purview of the district's procurement officer, and since I'll be retiring and Mr. Salters will be taking over what I oversee, and including the district's procurement officer, it just makes sense to make him the person in charge of, as one of those dudes to ratify unauthorized procurements.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Salters, do you agree to that? Will you accept the challenge? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments, board, before we vote on that?
Yes, or, Mr. Butler, so, were you saying that you currently do this, or the procurement officer currently holds?
Yes, I, I, I am the district's procurement officer.
Okay.
And I do ratify those unauthorized.
Okay, I just know, we have a couple, like a director of procurement, and then...
Right.
Okay, a director of bids and procurement.
Right. But as far as a district procurement officer, that would be me.
Okay.
For two more days.
Any other questions or comments, board?
How often does, how often does this happen? Is this a once a year, or 10 times a year kind of thing?
I think it's once every 32 years.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about the actual unauthorized...
Like, when was the last time an act needed ratifying?
Um, they, I mean, they happen throughout the year. Districts will do certain things that are outside the guidelines of procurement, so they are giving an unauthorized procurement letter, letting them know what they did wrong, and requesting from them what steps they take in order to cure that in the future, so then I would review those and say, okay, that makes sense. It may have been a, a new secretary who didn't know the procurement rules, so I said, now we've, we've gone over, and we made sure she knows the rules, so then I just sign off and ratify it.
Point of personal privilege, I just had a new person, if I could say that, do that. She was new, and she just made one mistake, and it's a form you get. I get it, and I send it on to her, she has to write what we did wrong, have to confess what we did wrong, and how we're going to remedy it, just like John said, so, it happens more than you'd think.
And is that, so, if it's, say, a contractual matter, can the contract be nullified? If, if you as the, as the unauthorized delegate, could you nullify the contract?
It would depend on what the, what the issue was, because sometimes, it may be that we receive it after the fact. But yeah, if it was a contract and it wasn't done properly, yes, we could nullify the contract.
And the vendors are aware that, that the contract is, could be, if they're talking to the wrong person, could be nullified.
Yes, because it's up to them to realize who is eligible to sign that contract, so if they had a, a bookkeeper or even a principal sign the contract, it's not binding, and that's up, by law, that's up to them to know that that's the case.
Gotcha. And are there, are there kind of formal presentations that come back to the board to say, these were the number of unauthorized...
Not...
I can't even come up with the words on this. Unauthorized...
Procurements.
Procurement ratification. Sorry about that.
Yeah, currently, there is not. It's basically monitored, and as long as it's not, you know, repeated and repeated and repeated, normally, it's very, makes a lot of sense to say, okay, person was new, they didn't realize, now they know, we'll move on.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
That's something I'd be interested in seeing. A report, some kind of report that just gives you some kind of summary.
Okay. I'll, I'll notify Mr. Salters.
Okay, Mr. Salters. There you go.
Guessing you can't come up with that in two days, huh?
I mean, not past, I'm just saying, going from this point forward.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, hearing done, we'll take a vote. All in favor of naming Mr. Salters the officer in charge of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. 14.6 is the minority business enterprise approval. Let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board of trustees approve the 2019-2020 minority business plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Butler, you want to say anything about that?
As you're aware, it's, it's basically the same plan that we've had intact for years. The only two changes being, we, obviously, we changed the year from 1819 to 1920. And then the other, other change would be to change it from me being the procurement officer to the chief operations officer, Mr. Salters becoming the district's procurement officer. But other than that, everything's still the same.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any questions or comments, board?
Yes. On the last page, the MBE goals, just from attending previous board meetings, I've noticed that over the last couple of years, we haven't met that goal. Do you know when the last time was that we met our goal?
I don't remember the exact year. It may have been two or three years ago, I'm not sure. But there's different reasons for that. To be a minority business, you have to be registered with the state. The state has certain requirements in order to be a minority business. You can't just say, well, I'm a minority business, so I'm a minority business. There's a lot of paperwork that has to be filled out, and some companies, I think, have come to the conclusion it's just not worth the hassle of going through to be named a minority business. So there's been a reduction in the statewide number of minority businesses, which has made it harder to, to reach that goal. I could find out the, the last year, but that'd be easy to find out that we met that goal, but if I had to guess, it's probably, probably maybe three years ago.
Okay. I'm just curious, who requires us to set a goal? Is this a state law or is this district policy?
It's, it's a, it's a state requirement, and it's mainly for state agencies, although we do fall under that realm also. And, and the state may have a different repercussions as far as if you don't meet that goal from what the district does. So the district kind of sets their own parameters, etc. If you don't meet the goal, what are you going to do? Where the state more mandates, the, the state procurement office, they pretty much mandate what you have to do, whether that's sometime in improvement plan or whatever it might be. I'm not sure of the exact requirements. So it is mandated by the state, but how it's enforced is up to the district.
And how do we enforce that?
Basically, we give a report to the board, notify the results each year of whether we met the goal or not. Up till just a few years ago, we pretty much met it every year, so it wasn't an issue. It's only been the last couple of years where we've fallen a little bit short in meeting that goal, but so far, nothing's, you know, been done or suggested to be done for not meeting the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Butler, the issue about meeting the goal is not that, you know, we aren't accepting contracts. The issue is that we haven't had certified contractors step forward and make bids for business. I mean, that, that's the struggle.
Well, and, you know, and I guess technically, if you want to blame somebody, you can blame me, because I've always looked at it like, we're not going to pay more just because you're a minority business. We're going to take the best deal for the taxpayers' money, and we're going to go with them. The state actually sometimes will do, do that. They'll actually pay more in order to try to meet their goal. We took the stance, we're not going to do that. So we just felt like it was a waste of taxpayers' money.
Any other questions, board, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the minority business enterprise approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous.